All right, we're going to call this meeting to order at 6:30 on the news. The school committee make seek to convene open session and recess to executive session for discussion and/or action regarding those items of business exempt from open meetings under Rhode Island general law 4246-4 and a discussion superintendent evaluation Rhode Island general law 4246-5A1. Individuals have been notified including the right to have any discussion held in open session. Do I have a motion to convene an executive session?
I'll make it. Okay, I'll make it. I'll make a motion to recess to executive session.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
You
May I have a motion to seal the minutes of executive session?
I'll make a motion to seal the minutes of the executive session.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That motion passes. There were no votes taken in executive session. Next up, we have comments from the community, so I'll turn that over to James.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The first one on the list is Brittany Apuzzo.
Good evening. My comment tonight is with regard to the Wakefield Elementary School property being relinquished to Town Council control. And once the school property is given to the town, all future options are lost. This area, particularly around Main Street, is becoming increasingly popular for young families. The location of the school was actually one of our deciding factors for purchasing a home. Unfortunately, it closed, and so we looked into other options and decided on alternative schooling. Almost every Saturday, we walk to Melgie's. On the way back, we stop at the playground, which always has families at it. I've spoken to many individuals who share the hope for this important property to stay as an option for the community. I asked the committee to postpone the transfer in order to fully evaluate options and weigh what the future impact to the community would be, especially considering that there are hundreds of new homes planned to be built in South Kingstown in near term, with town emphasis to build more. New home inventory will bring new families and create demand for an elementary school in Wakefield. Alternative options could exist that would keep this property out of the hands of developers and in the power of the community, such as the Parks and Rec Department having control for an extension of the current park and a clause that the property must be returned for educational purposes if the children of this community have the need. This is a historic, well-liked site. If it is given to the Town Council, it would be sold off to developers and out of town and taxpayer control. Then all future options for our town would disappear. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to, for point of information, we're mandated that if we close a school, the building returns to the town. So we don't have a choice. That's the, it's a municipal building. It goes back to the town. I urge you to talk to the town councillors and advocate for what you want with them because they're the ones that will make the decision. It, it's just the way that state law is, but go and advocate for, for families. And, and hopefully they'll listen to you.
Marissa Salisbury? This is, does not, this is not hyperhuman either.
You can, no, come, just if, if we can give you facts, then, then Michael can tell you facts. We can't, we can't get back to it back and forth though.
Just, there's a green thing. Thank you.
Sorry, I just wanted clarification. You're mandated to return it to the town, but does that stipulate whether it goes to the Parks Department or whether it goes to Town Council? Or they're all considered the same and Town Council would decide where it goes?
It's the Town Council purview of all of the decisions, so we'll be with them.
Okay, thank you.
And if there are questions, there are things that I can, there were public comment that when we have agenda, uh, business item, uh, school committee business A, that I can address, uh, in my recommendation, I will do so.
All right, Marissa Salisbury?
I know you just kind of told her, but I'm here to just voice my opinion on, on the same topic, basically. It's clearly we're very passionate about this, this neighborhood. But yeah, I'm here to talk about the potential transfer of the school to the town of South Kingstown. It's inevitable that if the town, if the land gets turned over to the town, it will end up in the hands of a developer. While there may be promises of affordable housing, there's no guarantees. And once this land is gone, it is gone for good. This property also plays a crucial role in supporting events in town. The parking lot is regularly used for festivals, Main Street events, Saga Tucket Park gatherings and parades. The latest site plan proposes just 16 parking spots for public use. Realistically, those will be filled with residents of any new development and their guests. Losing this vital parking will make it harder for people to attend community events, which hurts our local economy and the spirit of Wakefield. We're asking you to pause the vote. Please take time to assess the long-term needs of this growing town. More families are moving in, other developments are in the works, and the enrollment will inevitably increase. There's a strong chance that we'll need another elementary school in the future. So before making an irreversible decision, conduct a census and carefully look at the numbers. If budget is the main concern, as it often is, consider an alternative. Instead of giving it to the town, transfer the land to Parks and Rec Department. They can maintain the playground and preserve the space for public use. The building itself could be repurposed as a community hub with work, shared workspaces, bathrooms, a nursing room, a recreational room. And if the day comes when we do need another school, build in a clause that allows a district to reclaim the property without having to purchase new land. This is a major decision that affects real families who live and work here. We urge you to take a step back, think about the future and consider what this land means to all of us before making a permanent decision. Please think about the long-term impact before giving this land away forever. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to come to the podium and speak? If not, we will close public comment. Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That motion passes. Okay, now we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the school committee. I have, uh, as part of my report, uh, or as my total report, the personnel action. For your information, I would like to thank Priscilla Patriarca and Claire Dialia for their service to the district. However, I would also at this time like to welcome Cassandra Smith, Jane Carr, Grace Wilson, Courtney Riley, Mary Ritchie, Chris Vigliotti, or Christie, excuse me, Vigliotti, Holly Campbell, Brett De, De, De Raza, Rebecca Mears, Allison Thurs, Carrie, Carrie Moretti, Michelle Clark, uh, to, uh, the, the South Kingstown Educational Community, as well as, uh, James Morduran as, uh, to our athletic coaching, this, uh, team. Uh, and that, as you can see, uh, our administrators have been busy getting ready already for next school year with these hires. And that is my superintendent's report for this week.
Thank you. Is there any questions for Mr. Pradav Padraza? All right, I will entertain a motion to accept the superintendent's report.
I will make a motion to accept the best superintendent's report ever.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That motion passes. And we appreciate it.
Sorry.
Okay, we will move on to the school committee business. A discussion action, relinquish care, custody and control of Wakefield Elementary School building to the town.
So, uh, before you, uh, as well as posted to board docs, you have my recommendation for this body to give final authorization to rela, to relinquish the care, custody and control of Wakefield Elementary School to the town of South Kingstown. All educational purposes of this building, as well as educational materials of a substantial nature, have been either removed and/or ha, have ceased. Ultimately, the operations of the school as it stands right now, the school is essential, or excuse me, the town is essentially paying us to pay them to take care of the grounds, to take care of the playgrounds, all of which is, um, handled by the Parks and Rec Department, not our own, uh, not our own facilities. So, um, I would like to thank members of our, uh, Town Parks and Rec Department as, uh, well as, uh, the yeoman, yeoman's work done, uh, by our own facilities and, and maintenance crew to get, uh, Wakefield to this point. However, again, at this time, given our current enrollment and enrollment trends, the space availability at our exit, three existing elementary schools. And the, the current facilities that we have, uh, we do not foresee needing or, uh, having to open up and use this as an educational facility. As such, uh, the care, custody and control, because it would no longer, the building is not projecting to be an educational facility run by the school department. It is my belief and recommendation that it then does turn over to the town, by which it can then appropriate as it sees fit and in accordance with community comment and feedback to the appropriate department.
So I do have a one question, and that is the time capsule. Did you have discussions around that, making sure that they do something next November?
We do know about the, the, uh, about it, and we do have plans to, um, make sure that it is celebrated or, uh, make sure Mr. Gould, uh, in cleaning that, uh, cleaning that out as well as contributing to it is, is keenly aware, um, of that, as well as we've had numerous, um, conversations with the town as well as, uh, with community members who have inquired about it. We do not have specific plans yet. The, the main portion of this was to make sure that, again, we're spending unfortunately lots of time monitoring the building, taking care of, you know, taking care of repairs, windows, cleaning it out, essentially send being stewards to a vacant building rather than a vacant school or anything with an educational purpose. But once we do, we will be able to double down and put attention towards excavating and, um, a community engagement around said time capsule.
I think it's great that, uh, Mr. Gould has a personal connection. That's wonderful. Does anybody else have any questions regarding?
Should we make a motion and then discuss, or should we care, we discuss right now? Okay, so I'm going to make a motion with the caveat that I'd like to discuss, to approve relinquishing care, custody and control of Wakefield Elementary School building to the town.
Now I'll second that motion. All right, now we will open it up for discussion.
So because it is on the agenda, we can address specifically what the community members, um, came up and spoke to. I love to hear, um, the, the perspective from especially our younger families that, that people are coming and that there's, there's potential growth in our community. Because I sit at the Town Council last night and I hear a different segment of the population telling us how we're driving families out of town and nobody's coming and, and there's this often this battle of the, of the minds over that. And I witness what you witness and I experience what you experience. So I, I truly appreciate you coming to the microphone and expressing that. The unfortunate thing is, is we are mandated to hand the school back over to the town. We can't sit, tell them like who will maintain custody and control of it within their town, but our community members can. So our community members and even members of our school committee who are passionate can go to the Town Council and send letters to the town manager and, and, and the town councillors themselves, the Parks and Rec Group, um, and expressing your opinion on that. And, and I would like to think that, um, they would listen. I'll also suggest, um, that the, specifically the playground, um, that is associated there, that has, uh, that has deep roots with our community far and wide. And there's, I know there's discussion around making sure that that is preserved regardless of what is happening. So, but I think it is, I think it's time for robust discussion, um, especially among our younger families to, to take it to the Town Council and, and really express what you would like to see happening there. I know there's no definitive plan that has been, that has been, um, planned out. I think they, they have a lot of different ideas. Each, all five of them have their own ideas on a lot of different things. But if there can, can be a large voice coming from our young families coming to our Town Council meetings and really truly expressing logical opinions and, and not just opinions, but very clear facts, um, I think it would be helpful.
Let's just kind of piggyback on what it's saying here and go back to when the school was first being closed. This conversation was being had at the town hall level because there was an assumption that it was going to get into the hands of the development, right? People thought that houses were going to just go up very quickly. So I agree with her that you, we need to tap into the town and make sure they understand that we would like to keep that standing as is. And maybe enhance in other areas for the families and the community.
Yeah, I just want to echo what, uh, Kate and Paul said about, about the school. It's, it is exciting to see young families excited, uh, you know, and passionate about what's going on in our, our town. And yeah, the Town Council is the appropriate venue for having discussions about the future of that property. I know nothing is set in stone. There's no, there's no contract waiting to be signed as soon as we make this vote tonight. At least that I'm aware of. So it, as far as I'm aware, it's going to be open for discussion at the Town Council level. There's room for all sorts of opinions to come to them from our community. Uh, everyone's got their own ideas on what to do with it. But I think if we can, you know, if, if, if families are very passionate about keeping it open space or keeping it, uh, part, making it part of the park. I mean, I think there's lots of options there that are certainly open to discussion. But that is something that would have to be discussed at the Town Council level. And, you know, as, as Kate said, we can't, you know, we can't control that. We can't control where it goes. We can only treat it as educational building. We can only treat it as an educational building. And as we discussed this evening, it's no longer an educational building. So we need to turn it back over to the town and let them have that robust discussion with the community about what should be next for that property. And I hope it is a robust and, and full-throated conversation about that. Because I think it does have a lot of potential and it has a lot of meaning for this town, I understand. But as far as it goes for this evening, we do have to turn it back over to the town and that then those discussions can continue at that point.
I agree with what my colleagues here at the school committee table say. And I believe, and someone can correct me if I'm wrong, because I never went to Wakefield School. I went to Matunik School. But I believe that the playground at Wakefield School has been dedicated to Nancy Brown. That's what I thought. And I think that, that needs to come into the picture.
It's not only the Nancy Brown Playground, but also Sari Sanctuary. I think there are a lot of families very connected to that, that property in the areas right there. So, I mean, I, I think that this is something that we need to keep in contact with the town councillors as well and make sure that we understand where they are in this process and, and get information out there. But I do hope that people that care, you know, and how this property is used will continue to advocate and go to the town council and, and, you know, say their piece. And, and so they, they need to hear from all of you as well. Brad, did you want to say something?
Yes, I'll be brief. No, I think, I see this as an opportunity actually, because I think as long as we have this property, it's going to be what it is. And it's not going to get any better. And we're not going to make improvements to the building. The playground, I think, needs some maintenance that could be done now by the town. And the, the community deserves a better space there than a closed building that is never going to be more than what it currently is because we can't use it for anything other than education. And it doesn't have an educational purpose right now. We don't, we, we financially can't open another building and don't have a need for it. So I think that there's an opportunity for the town to do something better than what it is now.
All right, if there's no further discussion, then all in favor?
Aye.
That motion passes. And we'll move on to item B, discussion action fiscal year 2026 adopted budget update.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the committee, superintendent, assistant superintendent. We hit the ground running when we came on board just a month ago. And as the former CFO was stepping out the door, he did explain to me that there was some significant changes from the adopted school budget that took place back in February and March of 2025. And as things unfolded through the course of the spring. So he was preparing a recommendation for a revised general fund budget as he was departing your school system. And with it being turned over to myself and, and the leadership within the district, we analyzed what was available. We spent a lot of energy and a lot of time on the staffing because that was the most significant cost that you have in your budget. And we ended up realizing that back in February and January, when salary costs were being determined, some of your contracts hadn't been settled. We weren't sure who was stepping to what pieces, et cetera. And so there were estimates given at, back at that point in time. Fast forward to three months. Myself personally, as well as the staff, spent an exorbitant amount of time correlating between what was being paid for out of payroll, how the HR office was working, what they had for vacancies and expectations for 2026, and then conversely looking at how the budget was prepared and those elements. And so this evening, wrapping this all together, we have a document that provides you a summary of that information as well as line item detail. And so I'm going to just try and hit the highlights because I think most of what you're familiar with back in March is applicable. We also set it up in a format that was the same as what you have presented people on. So it should look very familiar with regards to presentation. And I just want to thank the school administration, the staff members that you have. They did yeoman's work in order to generate a budget that collectively they are on the same page as to what is in it. And if there's any variances or deviations, they'll be the first to help assist identifying those issues and be able to manage those, those costs as it unfolds. I'm not sure if there's a presentation. I don't have something that can put it on the screen. But I'm happy to speak to it at this point. So I gave you the general overview of what took place. The nitty gritty has to contend with our revenues. And so the report, is there a, my, my two-page cover memo has the bullets that I think I find very helpful. Was that done separately? You have it? Okay. Well, we'll stay on the summary level then because that's primarily where my focus is. The first portion, oop. Whoa, I'm sorry. I thought you had the summary available, but one page you just had up? Okay. This document, we tried to put in a nutshell the variations from what you've adopted in March to what's being recommended by administration this evening. From the revenue side, the municipal appropriation that was anticipated back in March to what was enacted by the town was a $500,000 differential. So we got to start right at the top that the town's already said you're going to be level funded and you were hoping for expecting a $500,000 increase. So clearly that $500,000 is a reduction in our recommended budget. The fortunate element that's taken place during the course of the season, oh, excuse me, the spring, was that the school department leaving your medical provider and the cooperative that you worked with in a self-insurance program provided fund balance dollars that would be sitting there in case of long-term costs that might impact your medical costs in the future. You went to a new style program where you're paying premiums to the trust. And if your medical costs go up significantly because you have a disaster-type case that might spend a million dollars, you don't have to cover it. That's the difference between a full premium base versus a self-insure. So the funds that were remaining in the cooperative that you had been participating in, which would have been used for long-term potential costs, is now available. And those funds are being turned over to the town and then in turn being turned over to the school. So while they didn't provide the $500,000 requested on an ongoing basis in your appropriation, there is a one-time payment coming in for $608,000. Okay, that's a major swing in understanding that we're good this year. But going into 2027 will be an issue to contend with either cost reductions or further increases in revenue because that $600,000 will go away. The other major impact item at the revenue level was the state just enacted state aid to schools just recently. And we did get notice that it was fully funded based on their calculations. The windfall is that the South Kingston School Department is receiving a little over $100,000 more than what was budgeted. So there's some minor tweaks we did when it came to the accounting codes, the UCOA codes. But the essence of the major impacts between those two items provides additional revenue that wasn't initially anticipated, a little over $200,000. On the expenditure side, the round numbers, the salaries are going up about $93,000. We've calculated. There's a breakdown about the FTEs within your report that shows that we actually have reduced our FTE count from 25 to 26 by 17. And the differentiation between what was approved to what we have before you this evening is only about a point four position that went up. And point two of that, or half of the issue is we receive final funding, announce allocations for our grants. And two staff members who last year we paid, got 2.2, 20%, excuse me, 20% of this annual salary from a grant, we're only going to get 10. That's the only thing the grant can cover. So those, that extra 10% is now coming back to the budget. So those two positions count for half of the increase. To me, a point four increase, given all the things that are going on in the number of FTEs, which is over 380, is a pretty significantly run tight ship that you have going on. The next element was in reduction in fringe benefits. And it's broken down, you know, in the details and granular. But in total, it's 87,000. The property purchase services is $100,000 savings from what was budgeted back in March. Excuse me, an increase of, of, back in March. When I first looked at the increases, I saw increases in the HVAC system. I just noticed in tonight's report that there's groundskeeping services is where the 100,000 is. So I'm a little confused as to what I had read and put in my report versus what's on the detail level. And I can get information on that and get back to you. But overall, there's been a minor need to increase costs. During the recent budget committee meeting, a discussion ensued as to, well, what do we have the additional funds with the extra revenue and you're only going up about $100,000? We got $130,000. What are the issues in the district, et cetera, et cetera? And I would defer to the superintendent at some point in this conversation that there was a significant conversation about student equity and issues across the schools. And it may be a need for another position or something of that nature or other services provided. Again, I will defer to administration with regards to the academic needs that that particular item and has, how that might impact the schools. So what we've done this evening is put it in a designated area called other contingencies. So that we don't do now, there is not a targeted expense today that's on the table. But we just need to identify where that investment can take place if, if there's a need. And I would defer. So this evening, in grand numbers, we had an increase of $255,000 in revenue. We had 120 some odd thousand dollars in additional expenses. And we have $130,000 available to target a specific need within the district. Happy to answer any questions. I think the interesting pieces that we have on the table for you to review is the level of detail of object codes, which is uniform chart of accounts that align with the state requirements. We're providing you with the FY25 adopted budget. We did close the books. The only thing we have open for FY25 for actuals is about a million dollars of open purchase orders that we're going to process through the rest of the summer. But I already provided that in your consent agenda. But that data is in the same report. So you have a trend analysis built in as to what did you budget? What did you spend? What did you adopt budget in March? And what are we recommending this evening? You've got a broad range of information to be able to see the economics of the district. And we seek your approval of adopting the revised recommended budget as presented. And I'm happy to answer any questions that may come up. Thank you.
First, I want to say thank you. I mean, that you've gone through and done all this work to scrub the numbers. I mean, it, it, they look, it, it looks really good. And I thank you for all of that. So let's open it up to questions.
Okay, I guess my only concern would be adopting this budget. We have that $130,000 other contingency. That doesn't tie back to any kind of UCOA code. Is that problematic?
No, it shouldn't be. I do recollect having a contingency allowance account that I would communicate to you when we go to put the budget into the system, unless a decision is made this evening to allocate that, those dollars targeted to a specific expense. That's why I was waiting to find out what the decision is. Because if you decide to make an investment in some kind of program, service, or staff, that I would just put those dollars into the decision that is forthcoming. If not, I will find out proper accounting code for the short term if that decision's not made tonight.
Just so we know that Mr. Perdanza will be talking to that in our very next item. So it's going to be, if approved, it'll be a contingency for a very short time. So any other questions for Tony?
I don't have a question. I just want to say thank you. This was very easy to understand. The way you kind of mapped it all out makes logical sense. Having, knowing that we've had discussions at this table about potential contingencies that we're currently facing and, you know, including impacts on staffing enrollment due to, due to our elementary schools. And I'm assuming that in the next agenda item, it's going to be touched upon. So I appreciate, I appreciate you mapping it out the way you did. I find it quite helpful and clear. So just a big thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ferucci, for the, as Ms. Massenanti said, the very easy to read and follow documentation of the budget that we have. And if the chair wishes, I will make a motion to accept the budget update as presented by Mr. Ferucci.
Second.
All right, if there's no more discussion, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
That motion passes, but let, let the record show that Mr. Sheer had stepped out and was not part of the vote. Thank you. And thank you so much. And with that, we'll move on to the next one. I'll turn that over to the superintendent.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If I, I would ask that the elementary projected enrollment, if we could project that for the community, thank you. It is my recommendation for the committee tonight to add an additional grade two teacher at West Kingston Elementary School. Based off of our to-date, or actually last week's enrollment. I'll take people through this spreadsheet the best that I can. This recommendation is on the conservative side. There are some other sections that are close to capacity. However, until they are over and other actions that take place during a normal summer and school year, I, I will refrain from making any additional. However, as I'll, as I'll demonstrate in taking action, or if you were to adopt this recommendation as it currently stands, doing so will provide equity and equality across our grade two classrooms across all schools. So as you look at that spreadsheet, ultimately you see all three of our elementary schools. What is highlighted in green is what we ended last school year with in terms of enrollment that was rolled over. And so first grade became second grade, second grade became third grade, et cetera, et cetera. Also, during the course of the year, people change addresses. However, they can elect to stay in that school rather than get transferred over to another, to their new home-zoned school. At the end of the year, those then get accounted for. So all of those numbers that are in green took place during SWI 2425. The numbers in orange are to-date registration additions. Oh, I'm sorry. Before I get there, the change of address or the COA, any subtraction is, has been met with an addition into another school. So I, change of addresses are for in district only. It's not, we're moving out of town, change of addresses. So I, I excluded those. In the orange, you see our new registrations to date. Those are definitive. They either have appointments or have had appointments already and are registered. So using then last year's end-of-year rollover or class sizes with our new registration, I have our current projected total. What I then did on July 9th was What I then did on July ninth was speak with each elementary principal to talk about confirmed withdrawals. So paperwork. Has been submitted. Conversations may have been had, no paperwork submitted. Nope, that's not on, this is. Principals or their assistants are in possession of withdrawals. Additionally, at the end of each year, we have placements into various district schools for various reasons, whether it be hardship, whether it be. So for a variety of reasons. And I have then put to date any transfers, both. In terms of subtractions and additions. In those columns that you will see where there are zeros, I just wanted to show that there was an offset. So there was a transfer out as well as a transfer in. Or there may have been two transfers. So just wanted to let you know that if someone in the community were seeing this and saying, hey, wait a minute. I got a letter and I'm not reflected in there that the committee know that they are involved in those numbers. Of particular concern that I've been highlighting now. For the past month or so, and you'll see those entire rows in bright yellow. We wanted to pay particular attention to grade four. Originally, grade four, when it was getting rolled over or as part of FY twenty six. I recommended closing a section there because we had space available. However, during the course of the school year, we did have students enroll. And so this was a good problem to have. However, we did reduce this. This grade four previously had four sections. When we go through this analysis, we see that they ended the year at seventy five. It wasn't a problem last year. Because again, there were four sections, but we collapsed a section as part of FY twenty six. We have since had a registration. So we have a projected total of seventy six. We cannot do that, or I'm not allowed to do that because of the collective bargaining agreement, again, setting our class sizes at grade four and five at twenty five. However, you'll see there that there have been two superintendent placements to other schools. I will highlight, or I will say that this in those placements in no way, shape or form are related to those class sizes. They were taken by, at the end of the school year, when those, when the conditions that had those students placed at that school. Was already in motion. So this is, this is, that was not done in order to create space, although by policy. You do, you have granted the superintendent placement of students. However, again, that is not why we are there. So we are currently to date at seventy four students, which gives us, again, not much room, but some room. As we scroll down and we get to my recommendation. If we follow grade two to cut to the chase. We ended the year at forty four, so we were below the cap. However, we have three. Folks who want to enroll once again, flagging us as a CBA. Or a collective bargaining violation. If we were to move forward, I would need to place at least one student. In another school incurring potentially other transportation costs to the district dependent upon. You know, what that cost would be. There might be no cost if there were a bus running close already in existence if, you know, but though, so that it is unknown. However. Those costs and depending on where people live, as you all are keenly aware, we are a very large district and we can be spread out. So those costs can be significant. So it is my recommendation to add another section because, and as I mentioned before, if you take a look at that forty seven total. That is the same forty seven total that Peastale currently has with three sections. And those three sections have class sizes of sixteen, sixteen and fifteen. If you were to look at grade two in Matunik Elementary, which only has two sections. However, they too have sixteen and seventeen. If we were to open up that section. Again, we would again have equality across our elementary grade two. Here is the caveat, though. And I would like the the public to know this, that if we were to open up a section at West Kingston. And there are students in other grade twos in other schools in the district. There would be space for them to return to West Kingston. And so we may see as a result. Other school grade two numbers go down if students chose to return. However, if they've been there their entire educational career and people are providing transportation or there's a bus already going by. I would not be forcing anyone back to West Kingston. And so while the opportunity to return would. Would be created, we will not be required, I will not be transferring anybody back. I would then recommend that, you know, I'm going to continue to watch the grade one as well as the grade four. We also have just begun in terms of registration as well as homeschool paperwork. Whether, although we'll have some students who will return from homeschool, we may have others, students. Who were in our schools who may choose to homeschool, which again would take away. So I will wait for further data to come in. However. Given that West Kingston is growing, it is only. You know, twenty one students less than Peastale, not including preschool. As well as it was a. In in terms of our current budget standing, of which we do need to adopt a balanced budget and of which you have with that contingency. The impact, the fiscal impact to the district, given the additional state aid would be minimal and the educational benefits.
So I know you did bring this to the Budget Subcommittee. And they had a recommendation, but I'd like, Kate, could you just talk about, we had a really good discussion with some community members and I just think it would be nice if you could talk about. How we came to recommend this as a subcommittee?
I wasn't there.
You weren't there. Sorry. I'll ask Michelle then.
So one of y'all have to do it.
So you're everywhere. I apologize, but Michelle, she did a great job of running that meeting.
We looked at. The numbers in those, in the second grade, we looked at the numbers in all the grades, but we focused on that second grade. Across the district and by adding that one section at West Kingston. Where, as Mr. Perdanza indicated in his description, we are leveling out. The grade two classes across the district. So I know a couple of years ago, there was. Some consternation among the teachers that there was one school that had. Much bigger class size and, you know, another school that. Some of those elementary classrooms had, you know, half the number of students and so. And it's just not fair and equitable. And so we discussed that adding that second grade section. At West Kingston to level that off. And we do have. Those contingency funds to take care of us for this year.
I would just like to add that the contingency funds. May be enough to cover it. Or may not. We don't know because it would depend on the step level of the teacher and everything. So. We did have a discussion that if there was a shortfall, which shouldn't be that large, but if it were, it would come, it would have to come from fund balance. But we, depending on the level, there could be absolutely no impacts. But that would, that was our recommendation to accept. The proposal from the superintendent to be paid for from the hundred and thirty thousand in contingency. And if there's a shortfall, to come from fund balance.
We will be able to come up with that figure relatively quickly due to the history of layoffs and that this position would be posted to the general membership. And then in turn, we would then be going to the recall list. And so we wouldn't be posting to school spring, conducting interviews and we would be recalling. Again, a teacher who would have been successful in the district previously.
So, Mr. Perdanza, I just have two questions. You, the procedure is to open it up to the entire membership.
Based on the CBA currently, we have to open it up to our existing membership to see if there is any existing member. Who would want to take on a grade two position at West Kingston.
So theoretically, there might be a teacher who had been displaced from second grade. Into another grade, but they, their favorite was second grade and they would opt to come back. And then we would actually. Be recalling a teacher into a different grade. Is that the way it would, okay?
Yes. So it would be an expedited posting. I met with actually the union presidents, Mr. Seager and I this afternoon. It would be, they are open that if we were to do this, it would be an expedited two day posting and then. In order to fill that position and then deal with any effects, if there were no. If there were no, nobody going or looking to move to that position, we would then go to the recall list on day three.
Okay, my other question, and I didn't ask it the other day at the Budget Subcommittee meeting because it didn't occur to me. I'm not very familiar with the layout of West Kingston because again, neither my kids nor I attended West Kingston. Yeah, but I went to the old Matuna. I didn't go to the new Matuni. I'm the ancient one at the school committee table. Physically, we have the, the classroom space at West Kingston, right?
We do.
Okay.
Yeah, West Kingston, yes, we do.
I, I was assuming that you would have made that top of the list if that wasn't the case, but you know what happens when you assume things. So I, I will make a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation to add an additional. Grade two teacher at West Kingston Elementary.
I'll second it, but I still have.
I was just gonna say, and before we vote, we'll open it up for discussion. Go ahead, Kate.
So my concern comes in to clearly grade four at Peastale. And, and really grade one also at, at West Kingston. The contingency bucket that we are, we're just looking at is only for the one position. So what happens if we look at, if all of a sudden August comes around and grade four in Peastale. Is twenty six, twenty six, twenty six and grade one in West Kingston is twenty five, twenty five. Do we have a contingency for if that occurs?
So I would need to, you know, we will, much like we did with West Kingston and kindergarten this year. We would need to take a look at our existing C, existing enrollment in other building, in other buildings. However. Depending, so it would also depend upon when that happened. So there's contingencies or there's clauses in the CBAs of when students registered. If they are then able to join a classroom or if another classroom needs to open. However, based on our current fiscal year, any additional staff beyond this would need to be taken out of fund balance. However, I would point out too that the same would be true if we needed to. You know, to do another bus or two buses or a mini bus.
So I, I just wanted to piggyback on that real quick. Because I think, I mean, we, the town council already set us up for a structural deficit, right? By giving us one time funds. So at, at the end of the day, we have to take it from fund balance if we have to for this year. Again, we're still looking at. All the unknowns for the next budget session. However. The long-term solution, maybe we have to talk about redistricting.
Hundred percent for sure. Which follow-up question is. Though not ideal, many a child has thrived in it. Is there any potential solution of a split one-two class if needed at West Kingston?
It, it's been discussed, but in terms of our preparedness for it and a full evaluation of it. It has not been done in, in years is my understanding. And it would be a. A, a last, a last resort option.
First, I'd like to say thank you for this very thorough chart, which is very helpful to think through this. And for the way we are, we're thinking about the balance of these classrooms, because I think we've had an issue with. Equitable class sizes through our district. There's been an imbalance between our schools for a very long time that hasn't been addressed. And so I think we need to be thinking in this way about having better balances, you said, between class sizes at, at different schools, not just within. A single school and not only because of the CBA, but because of the experience of the, that those, those kids are going to have. To that end, I'm curious about the kindergartens in Peastale and West Kingston both are projecting forty students, but different number of sections. So is that?
Yep, that is correct. So that's our two, so in kindergarten, those are, are to date. Taking a look at our enrollment history, Peastale kindergarten registration tends to happen later in, in the summer. I believe also because West Kingston kindergarten closed this past school year, that there was a. Little bit of a, more of a rush, if you will, to get, to get in, to make sure you got into what to your home zone school with adequate space left. So. That does also, if that number though were to not change, that would be something that we would need, I could take up and potentially we would. Could look at involuntary transfer if necessary, if those numbers didn't change. However, given the conversations that have been going on, again, the historical trend, trend of late registration, as well as we have. Conversations with students who have undergone kindergarten screening, who have not yet registered. We are anticipating that that number at Peastale is going to increase.
And I, I might be misremembering this, but I think there was a time when we told people if they registered by a certain date, they were guaranteed their. Home districted school. Was that ever, I think that goes back to Dr. Strinkoff. So maybe we haven't done that in recent years. Because it seems like it would be, be difficult to do in the, in the structure that we have. I'm just, I'm similarly concerned about the grade one sort of very narrow. Numbers we have to work with there. But I don't know financially, there's much more we can do than.
The other, the other piece of this is that in, in terms of. While the FY twenty five will not, that audit won't conclude until many months from now, we will be get, as. Mr. Ferrucci alluded to, as encumbered funds either get closed out or get paid, we'll get a better idea of. Again, in terms of if we are in a surplus from FY twenty five, which then can inform those decisions. And give us a, a potential for the expectation of, of, of a, of a fund balance addition. Rather than being in, if we were, we are not in a deficit. We're very confident that we are not in a deficit for FY twenty five.
One other question is, in the CBA, isn't? One other question is, in the CBA, isn't there a requirement in some grades that over a certain size, there has to be an aid in the classroom? So so is there? It's just kindergarten?
Just kindergarten.
I pretty much lost my train of thought. Well, what question I wanted to ask, um, to think about.
So I know, Mr. Pataza, that you're doing this already, but I just want to say it publicly that we need to keep a very close eye on these three grades. And my other comment is I am well aware as an educator that a split classroom is not the ideal situation. But I would also like to say that I was in a split classroom, and I think I did all right. Both of my kids were in split classrooms and they did okay. So that said, it also depends on the teacher that's teaching in split classroom. But yeah, I I we've we've got to really watch that closely.
So if you don't mind, I I do want to speak to the split classroom a little bit because there is people have a tendency to downplay it. And and I even said it myself, it's less than ideal, but there are opportunities for growth in a split environment when you have kids who maybe are older in the lower grade or have the ability to rise up. And there are kids, you know, in the upper grade who 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 may be on the lower end. So there it's not to be dismissed out of hand because there are certainly opportunity for growth all the way around. And like you said, with the with the right teacher and and the and the right placement being had, it actually kids can, and I'll jump into the strategic plan thrive there. So I just want to throw that out there.
Yes. So when I was in elementary school, I was in a building that only had three physical classrooms and there were four grades. There was this, there were two split classrooms. And when my own two younger children were at South Road, when we had art on a cart and music in the lobby. My I had I was given a choice. Did I want to put my daughter in a split classroom? And I I opted to do that because of the teacher. And then my son came along and, you know, he had to do whatever his sister was doing and doing it and do it better. They they both really thrived in that environment.
So I want to say that I chose a program that had split classrooms for my kids. They were in kaleidoscope. If you've been around the district a long time, you've heard that term. First and second grades were split classrooms. There was two of them so they could collaborate. And so but that collaboration happens among students at the same level in our classrooms now. So but yes, there there is opportunity in split classrooms. I I do agree. Unfortunately, though, it takes a lot more planning, a lot more work. You have to have extremely qualified teachers in the right environment. I'm going to borrow Kate's term, the kids do thrive because my kids certainly did. But so I I do agree. But but it's hard to set up tho those kind of classrooms in in split levels sometimes. So but a great thing to talk about and and at where we are with declining enrollment. We can't afford to to not look at all options. Okay, Paula.
So it's it's not a question yet. Right now, it's just a comment, basically just clarification for myself for the public. So we are adding this third second grade classroom, correct? To West Kingston Elementary to kind of alleviate some of the concerns of last year of the over crowded second grade classroom, correct?
So my, yes, my recommendation would be to add that classroom so that because currently it is the only grade in the projected that would require at this time for us to send at least one student to the well, one student and any future enrolled students to other grade twos within the district, which would then we would not not know the fiscal and be able to calculate the fiscal impact of that.
Okay. Okay, thank you. And I'm going to go back to the personals action form. Here you have three new teacher assistants that are going to West Kins Matuna, excuse me. And is Matunik where we have a specialized special education program?
Yes, the bridge program is is housed at Matuna.
Okay, and that's who these votes are for. Is it for that program or to spread out?
I would need, it would it may be based off of, you know, in in terms of retirements, changes to IEP's programs, programming, so without a specific name, which obviously I can't get into, but that that is that that is a safe assumption.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
One additional thought. And it's, you know, it's the educator in me. Sorry, she came to this meeting. I should have left her at home. The and I don't want to make this like a long discussion about split classrooms. But one of the things as a high school teacher that I found was parents coming to realize, you know, math is not taught in high school by grade. Math is taught by subject. And so you have algebra one and you have some ninth graders, 10th graders in the same class, you have the same thing with geometry, et cetera. And the parents of those freshmen would literally have like a conniption fit when they found out their ninth grader was in the same class with a 10th grader. God forbid, if I ever had an 11th grader in there. But, you know, and it was hard to explain. And if if parents are, you know, see that a split classroom at the lower level provided advantages, they might not be so scared of their child in the ninth grade being in a class with a 10th or 11th grade. I don't know why they were so upset, but let me tell you, went through that every single year.
Lastly, I just want to say that I'm really grateful that we have this contingency fund. The work that our finance team did to to put these numbers together. A lot, most of it is state aid, but that we also, you know, have some expenses that have gone down too. So it's nice to have this hundred and thirty thousand. We've heard from many parents at West Kingston that class sizes were too large. And so it I'm grateful that we have the opportunity, at least at one grade, to provide another section and and achieve that equity at at least at grade two. So that's a good thing. And it's a good thing for for the school and for the for the students. So I'm happy about that. So with that, I'm going to call the vote. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Right, that motion passes.
Thank you very much.
All right, next brings us to D, discussion, action, strategic plan, draft, mission, and draft core values. Again, I'm going to turn that to the superintendent.
Thank you once, thank you once again, Madam Chair. It is my recommendation, and I'm very pleased to bring forward and recommend that the school committee adopt a or that we removed the word draft from the mission statement and the thrive core belief framework that was developed through our strategic planning process. The the framework represents a synthesis of extensive stakeholder input, research, best practice, and direct alignment with the findings of our equity audit. I would also like to thank, even though he wasn't at our last meeting, Councilmember committee member, excuse me, Shear, who put down the challenge, say it in eight words or less. As as well as one of the other themes in terms of the committee composition and guidance of are we getting too salady here? Are we are we making words salad? I will not take everybody through the three meetings of iterations of different mission statements that we looked at, different adjectives. But ultimately, that as we went through the process of looking at different mission statements from around the country, from the region, from the state, as well as take a look at the ride requirements. I'm proud that the subcommittee or I'm proud to report that ultimately what we are working on is what we believe and what our stakeholders are telling us we need. We're building a strategic plan for South Kingston School District. We're not doing it for ride. We're not doing it to make sure that we have a binder. We're making sure that it is there. And that ultimately it speaks to our fundamental intrinsic purpose as as educators, parents, and what we want for all students. And so it was this in mind that as we went through current iteration, or as we went through iteration and review of the mission and wordsmithing, one thing that did stay constant was this concept of thrive. And that our ultimate why, why do we exist as an organization, as a public school? What do we want for all students, our student? What do we want for the children in our classroom? What do we want for our graduates? We want them to be able to thrive regardless of whether that is in college, career, military, world exploration, that thrive summed it up. And we were kind of go again, going round and around about, well, what's the best way to do it? And then we realized really at our last meeting that the how we believe is really our core beliefs and our core values. And that ultimately that we found those within when we described what it means or what, excuse me, what all students need in order to thrive. And it does align perfectly with the recommendations of the equity audit. So the proposed mission statement is in partnership with the community, our students will thrive. The proposed core belief frameworks is we believe all students thrive through thr trust, high expectations, respect, inclusion, voice, and equity. As I outlined for the committee, we this town has had numerous missions, visions, strategic planning committees, some that have come to fruition, others that haven't. In terms of we used those past that past work and looked at some of those pieces, as well as in this past school year, did hold a community wide strategic planning survey about feelings regarding the community, both educators, faculty, staff, and community about their feelings regarding the mission. And you have some of those results before you. And then I'd also like to hi- highlight the equity audit priority needs of supporting teacher growth, engaging parents and families in empowering ways, centering student agency and growth, taking an approach to equity that honors all stakeholders and establishing consistency across the the district. When we take a look from then a educational and pedagogical point of view, each one of each pillar, if you will, or what I refer to as the pillars of our core beliefs are grounded in research. Without trust, without high relationship trust, you cannot have a school system that is going to reduce achievement gaps. Without high expectations, we are not going to meet the communities wants, needs, as well as our students' hopes and dreams for their futures, as well as excelling academically, as well as socially and civically. In terms of respect, we see that in the equity audit in terms of the positive peer relationships and that when to your point of actually our past, our last conversation, students don't see one another based on their age, they or their grade level, they see them as partners in learning and that they are all serving that common purpose. When there is respect that flourishes in both in classrooms as well as as we see in terms of the equity audit, respect for the community, respect for parents, respect for those who come in and out of the building. And then a a large pillar would be inclusion. We see that through the through the research that inclusive practices do produce superior academic results for when implemented properly for all students. Also, voice, again, that agency, that autonomy, that ownership of learning is found and supported through academic research, as well as, again, the need, we cannot address achievement gaps without acknowledging that there are achievement gaps and doing something about it. And so ultimately, making sure that each student gets what they both want and need is at the core and closing to closing achievement gaps and hence equity. What I would say is that if this is approved by the committee, whether it be wordsmithed or not, the next steps would be I've provided the I've provided to the committee, not only the direct correlation with the equity audit to each pillar, as well as to the survey responses. I also provided a draft of the research support. That is just a sample of what we would look to create. If it's adopted, what we will do is we will continue to curate resources for each one, for each pillar, to make sure that we can substantiate that with both current best practices as well as next practices as we innovate on behalf of our students and community. The strategic planning subcommittee would then also be tasked as to create a compelling vision statement of what that looks like, what that means, what does success look like? Five year, three years, five years into the future. And then additionally, and perhaps more importantly, what we would do is draft key performance indicators for each pillar of thrive or element of thrive to let us know if what we're doing is working and if not, that we can course correct. This can this cannot and will not be just a something on a slogan on a wall. This is not just an acronym to, you know, this is not a marketing campaign, although very nicely, this is again, and I say that confidently because of the academic research that is that is foundational to this, as well as I'm not going to take our limited professional development funds, time, the effort and energy of our fantastic faculty, staff, administration and students and just build a build the next three to five to 10 years off of a slogan. That's that's not what this is. That's not what this is about. But ultimately, it is to to prove it, to make that a reality will come in the next year or two. So with that, it is my recommendation that if you would discuss and consider the adoption of the proposed mission and the thrive core belief frameworks, which would enable continued strategic planning work, which would, this would provide the foundation for that, those next steps. And I'm happy to answer any questions at this time.
Shall we go ahead and do the motion and then we'll do the discussion? Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the adoption of the draft mission statement with the thrive core beliefs as presented by the superintendent.
Second.
Now we'll open it up for discussion.
So I have, first of all, thank you for the hard work. This is great, very clear, concise. I like the the eight eight words. I am curious, though, so we have the vision of a graduate that was put forth to our high school. And it it was built off of the precipice that it would be K through 12, right, would culminate as you graduate. And it, it was built off of the precipice that it would be K through 12, right, would culminate as you graduate. And I just wanted to make sure that the Thrive lines up with the seven Cs. So we have all these lovely, you know, the, the acronyms and all the words. And I think they're wonderful and as long as they, they all align. So we want to make sure that we're, because the vision of a graduate also shouldn't just be a poster on a wall. It, it's literally what we, our kids, when they graduate, our school district, not just our high school, but K through 12 experience are graduating in these certain manner and just making sure that they tie in one way, shape, or form.
And, and they, they, they will in that our vision of the graduate generally speaks to the, the skills disposition and knowledge that our students will graduate with, where our core, where our core beliefs about ultimately about what we need, about what needs to be done in our classrooms, outside of the classrooms, in lessons. So it's, it's more of what's happening and what, what needs to be foundational in the educational experiences of our students. And then ultimately the out, through those and the lessons in the, in the seven Cs, how those will be demonstrated. So one, one is ultimately, the core values about teaching and learning is about what we are going to ultimately guarantee takes place in, in classrooms and in lesson design as we then empower students with tho- those skills of the vision of the graduate.
Thank you for that. And the only other question I have is about the survey that was done with the 93 family caregiver responses. And in, and ensuring that the strategic planning survey followed the best practices of the equity audit when you're surveying our population to make sure we had a wide, robust, and diverse population that was being surveyed. And, and not just a smaller bucket of folks. So I don't know how, how you demonstrate that or not, or reassure or not, but just to make sure that that's all voices are heard in, in putting into the strategic plan around, especially based on equity.
Let me see if I can call it up.
I just want to say, I think this is a great foundational start to where we need to go. And thank you for your hard work with this and can't wait to see where we end up. Thank you.
So in terms of Miss Manzani's question, so there was a question. So in terms of, of that, we have sixty of those respondents, sixty-five students or respondents did not receive, or currently do not receive educational services with an IEP or 504 plan, and thirty-one percent did. So in terms of our ten percentage plus, we actually, we have strong representation for IEP and 504. Additionally, we have forty-nine percent of respondents were from the high school, forty percent from Broad Rock, twelve point five from Matunik, twenty-one point nine from Peastale, and thirteen point five from West Kings. From that, in terms of have children attending those schools, sorry, not out of a hundred, but in terms of what schools do, do your, does your child or children attend? Please select all that apply. Thank you.
So I, I would just like to comment for the benefit of the public, the people watching the meeting, that I have found this work on developing this strategic plan to be exciting. And it, we seem to have a nice array of folks involved in the, in the committee. Mr. Shear, myself, from the school committee, and Mr. Padraza, Mr. Seager. But in addition to that, we have some community members, principals, teachers, all contributing, you know, from, from their point of view. And it's been emphasized that throughout the meetings, I've kind of lost track of how many we had. I seem to have put my strategic planning folder in with my own coursework, which was, you know, I, I dug it out today, yesterday, I don't know, over the weekend, sometime I dug it out. But it's, it's been a good, good discussion with the emphasis that it's not going to be a binder that we're going to stick on the shelf and let it collect dust. And I will say that I'm not the wordsmith. Those of you that know me know where my strengths lie. But Mr. Shear, I'd like to thank him publicly for, even though you weren't there at, at the last meeting, like we kept saying, yeah, but Brad wants this to be short. Ten, ten words or less. So, so the work has been very rewarding and I'm, I'm glad that we have come to a mission statement and core beliefs. And I look forward to moving, moving this ahead with the rest of the strategic plan.
First, I want to say thank you for following that. My desire for a short mission statement, I think we saw some that were paragraphs of other districts, some of them that weren't ideal in terms of their grammar. And I, you know, I, I think the reason to keep it short is so that everyone can let, the idea is that you know it and you live it and it becomes something that we focus on, because everyone who works in the district, who interacts with our students, at some point is going to have to make a decision on their own about what they're going to do. And there should be guiding principles when they think, what's going to help this kid in the way that the district wants to help this kid? And, and it's important to know that our, our current mission includes that we are going to make kids college and career ready. And I think saying that we're going to make kids college ready leaves out a lot of kids. And every single kid in the district can thrive in their own way, depending on where they're starting from. When you think about thriving, it is not just doing okay or doing well, it's something greater. And it's also achievable for every kid, because they're starting from a different place and thriving for each individual means something different. So I think, I think that's important. So I think we're on the right track. Thank you.
I'd just like to say this is excellent work, good starting point. I appreciate tying it back to the equity audit as well, as far as how we're going to, how these are going to address those findings. I, I think this is a great framework to work from, and I think it absolutely needs to be top of mind as far as going forward. I totally agree. We don't want this to end up being a slogan or binder on the shelf. We want this to be the plan that we live by and, and teach our kids based on this. So I think this is, this is a great starting point for the strategic plan. I, I really appreciate the work you guys did into this. And thank you for keeping it short, because that's, that's a nice bite-sized mission statement that we can really, you know, memorize and keep in mind when we're, you know, making, you know, making decisions about things up here. It's, it's important to keep that in mind as well. So I think there's a lot of great things here and looking for, look forward to seeing what, what else comes out of this as far as our strategic, strategic plan going forward. So, yeah, thank you very much.
So the one piece that in terms of, so in, in the draft before you, just when it, this is an electronic document. We currently, so if we were to move forward and we, we would then make links or have aligned, you know, demonstrate to the community in terms of thrive and the purposeful alignment to the equity audit, as well as each one of the, the first letter will link to the research behind each one. So ultimately, the, the the word salad or the, the deeper dive will, so we'll keep it small, but you'll be able to keep on going deeper. That's the, that's the, that's the, the vision behind some of this work is that we keep on diving in and the more people want to go in terms of, why did you choose this? Well, how do you do that? That we can, that we're building that and that people are going to be able, whether that be the community, students, our educators will continue to be able to go down and find why, we'll be able to find out why this ultimately is our why and why and, and find something to either a, a way to grow themselves or something to implement. Or again, that answer to the question, why?
I think this is truly amazing work. I am a big proponent of one-sentence mission statements, because if you can't remember it, you can't live it. But it also makes it really hard, because when you have eight or nine words, they all have to mean something. And I, I just think that you guys have done a really good job and that it's based in research is absolutely necessary, because each word matters and, and you've provided us the document with the research for each word of, of the letters thrive. And, and it is meaningful research and every word is chosen with purpose. So I mean, I just think that you guys have done an amazing job. I'm really excited that this is the start of the strategic planning process. I mean, it's just, it, it, it's a great start and I'm, I'm really excited just to see how it continues and, and really looking forward to how you guys progress. So the, this committee, I thank you for all the work that you did. It, it's not an easy assignment. It, it's extremely difficult and that you came up with something truly, truly meaningful and, you know, and, and short is, is again, yeah, if you can't remember it, you, you're not going to live it. So great work and, and I'm just super excited. Anybody else want to say something before we vote?
I just want to thank Mr. Padraza for, in the tie-in between the word thrive and the equity audit, providing those links to the research that supports this. I would find that personally helpful and I think that will be good for the community.
All right, all those in favor? All right, that motion passes. Great start. Thank you, Mr. Padraza. And, and Mr. Seager, thank you. Okay, and that's will bring us to our second to the last thing on our agenda. The school building committee update. So Kate, do you want to?
Yeah, so we had a very exciting steps were taken last night, well, in our school building committee meeting on Thursday, and then our town council meeting last night, where we made, so the school building committee made recommendation and the town council approved our three very first bid awards to get started on doing work on the property. This will be a very important, very pivotal beginning of the project, because what will be happening is we're creating a new roadway, new bus route in the front over here in front of the cafeteria, next to the Hazard parking lot. Well, we're, we're redesigning, we're moving a curb cut and redesigning where the buses will drop off. But in doing so, we're, we're installing the the perimeter fence around what will be the work area on Hazard Field as well. And so it really is, it, it's, it's the true first signal that this is happening. I actually still get texts like, is this actually happening? I'm like, no, it's happening. If I have to go put the fence up myself, it's happening. So, but it's, it's, right? So it's very exciting and, but I will kind of continue to reiterate that our timing is very important and we're like, we're coming in tight. And we're, we're making it work. And we have a really great relationship going on between school building committee, school committee, town council, and more importantly, RIDE, the SBA. And also utility companies and, and, and other bid awards. People are truly understanding the gravity and the importance of making sure we don't miss dates and we can't afford to miss time. We have a couple, like, you know, a couple of days here, a couple of days there type of scenario, but we really need to hit basically a vote on August 12th and, and shovels in the ground on August 13th, right? So that's where we're, we're driving, our foot is heavy on the gas. And, and it's, and our steps are, are moving forward. So approving the bid last night, so Gilbane can go forward with a butter survey. So there's a radius that has been mapped out around this, this area where we're, where we've approved hiring a company that will do in-depth surveys of all the local residents and to document any sort of structural integrity that they have so that we can prove or disprove whether or not any sort of damage is done during construction. But what's really important about, to know about that as well is that we have, Gilbane is going to be placing vibration measuring tools in certain pockets of the land to make sure that it, whatever work is going on, that the vibration to the ground doesn't go over a certain level. And as long as we keep it under a certain level, then that helps to maintain the integrity of the structures around us. And there were a, a couple more bids that they, that one to me was the most important, because we are truly trying to be good neighbors and trying to maintain as much transparency and cooperation as we can. So far, so good. We have a few folks who are apprehensive, which completely understandable, because there are a couple properties in the back corner where we're pretty close. You know, distance-wise, but we're also being cognizant of making sure that there's continuous, you know, tree blockage, fences being installed, the whole nine yards. So we're really being in, kind of in tune and in constant communication with our butter. So very important to us. I would like to bring up the fact that there was a separate agenda item that was discussed for probably forty-five minutes to an hour from, Mr. Beasley had sent along a very detailed complaint about how we were not moving forward with geothermal and called into question the integrity of our architects and our project team, as well as the school building committee, the school committee and the town council in, in our continued support. What we had was a really great conversation and this project team was able to come back and explain how the process actually unfolded in full transparency with community trust, with trust between all the groups, and was able to demonstrate that all the information that has been shared over the past eighty meetings that took place fully in public with both bodies. The information is public, all the documentation, all, all of the research and fact-finding was, is, is accurate. There, nobody's getting scammed. There's, nobody is lying. We have, all the facts have been laid out in front of all the bodies and we've all approved. With eyes wide open going forward, the sustainability committee is in full support of what we're doing. We have the potential going forward to have solar installed. We're solar-ready. The energy efficiency of the new building is, is hitting all of the requirements and some even go, going above. So we're all very confident in our project team continue, you know, continue to be so. And everything is, is looking like we're, we're in a really great place and it's a really great project. And that's pretty much, yeah, that pretty much sums up last night's meeting. And so we will have our next school building committee meeting on July twenty-fourth at eight-thirty in the morning. I myself will be out of town as will Mr. Padraza, but Luke Murray will be running the meeting on our behalf with the project team. So does anybody have any questions for me?
Oh, just a question about, you mentioned the approval on the twelfth. We'll need to approve something on the twelfth too? Or is that the town?
That will be the town.
Okay.
But we'll be, we'll make sure that we're all up to speed as far as, you know, what it is that's being approved. The final thing I, I did want to bring up is we have been very quiet about Curtis Corner, athletic fields at the moment. But that's not, it's, it's not stalled. It's still, it's still a plan to run parallel. It's just because of the timing of the high school that's been our main focus. And in our next meeting on the twenty-fourth, the project team is going to talk to Curtis Corner. And in our next meeting on the 24th, the project team is going to talk to Curtis Corner Athletic Fields and as far as like, just a reassurance that it's, you know, it's still there, it's still part of the project. But it's just imperative that this summer we focus solely on making sure we're hitting all our dates for the school so that we can get it going, um, and hit our dates and maintain our budget.
So I just want to say I did watch the presentation last night to the town council and I'm, continue to be impressed by the project team. I, I think that, um, the school building committee has put together a, a fabulous group of consultants to, um, that are doing a great job. And so I think when they make recommendations, um, I trust them. I, I, I don't have any reason at all to not, um, believe that they're doing due diligence and everything that they report out and back to us. Um, and I just want to thank the, the school building committee for all of their hard work, but also the project team. I, I continue to be impressed by them and I'm really, really glad we have all of them working on our project.
I would like to thank Kate and the rest of the members of the school building committee, because, um, I think, like, I, I, I'm aware of the number of meetings you folks have had and, um, it's, it's such an incredible time commitment. And I agree with Ms. Vetta that the project teams that you have in place, um, are, are very good. And I also agree with the fact, uh, you know, when they recommend something, I, I have absolutely no questions, um, about it. I would just say, and I think, um, that the rest of the school committee, um, would be in agreement with me. If you need input from this body, a, a vote on something or just input or just a discussion, I, I would personally just say, ask us and we can have a, you know, some kind of a special meeting to help you out and like you said, meet those deadlines. But thank you very much and thank you to the rest of the school building committee.
I hundred percent agree. We would definitely want to keep it on track and keep it moving. So whatever needs to be done, we're, we're willing to make it happen.
We appreciate that. We're good. I'm happy to make a motion to adjourn.
Second it. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we adjourned at 8:42.